Going.
All right, we'll call the meeting at order at 7:07 and first everybody will be standing with their leadings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and next we're gonna go ahead and do the vote of office for a new trustee, Rick LeFebvre. Oh, you just stand right there, that's fine.
Okay.
You're in. So put your left hand up, there you go, or your hand up. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee.
That's okay. I will, what?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, and move right along to roll call. Mayor Bojers here, trustee Wolf.
Here.
Uh, trustee Work.
Smith.
Trustee Crawford.
Er.
Uh, trustee LeFebvre.
Yeah.
Uh, we have treasurer, uh, Dussette.
Here.
Clerk Laquet.
Here.
Uh, attorney France.
Here.
And we even have, uh, CEO Brecker.
Here.
And also DGW, uh, acting superintendent, John Wolfe.
Here.
All right, uh, first off we'll go with Gene.
Okay, I'm here to do, just to bring up the date on the bonds. Everything came in last week on the bonds, we've signed them, everything needed to be certified and everything was sent back. We owe a portion for local share and I thought as of this morning, everything was set as far as wiring funds out. I spoke with Jeff Smith from Municipal Solutions and he told me what to do and so forth and you have two vouchers with the information on, but disregard those vouchers. Because in the last two hours, everything has changed. Originally when we spoke, um, in the phone conversation, Dan and myself and some other people, they said we were gonna have to overnight a check to rural development, uh, because they do not accept wires. But as of this morning, I thought everything had changed. They sent a bunch of emails out this afternoon and it looks like it's going to appear we have to send two checks overnighted to rural development and then one check we have to deliver to the bank for our portion of the payment to the bank down here for this installment bond. One thing about that, I thought when I gave, well, they asked for a closeout of the bonds and Terry provided it to them, it was gonna close on the 24th, but it's actually closing on the 25th is when the bond will be paid off. So the amount that they have down here would differ by one day's interest because it'd be one more day interest. But I have not made any vouchers up for you to sign this evening, but if you would authorize us to do these three checks tomorrow, um, so we can get these done. Is there any amount of, one check would be $25,000, $281.25, another check would be $5,056.25, and another check would be $12,304.75 plus one day of accrued interest, whatever that is, I'm not sure what it is.
Each of those checks is plus one day?
I'm sorry?
Each of those amounts is plus one day?
No, just the, the one.
Just the last one.
They do have to be overnighted, the checks do have to be overnighted to rural development. I've tried overnighting stuff before through the post office down here and they don't. Like Bo said, we can call FedEx and have them pick it up. I'm not sure what that cost will be, probably forty, fifty dollars I'm guessing. But you'd have to schedule that early in the morning.
Okay, will they bill us for that? Cause we don't have an account for them.
I don't know, well, I have an account through the bank, so I don't know how that works if you do not have an account. I can't answer that.
Okay.
But you have the phone number, we gave it to you the other day, didn't we? So.
So do you also want us to sign the vouchers without the numbers to be completely on it?
That's up to you, or just authorize the payment of these three checks and then I can make the vouchers up this evening or tomorrow and you'll have to stop, are you able to stop in and sign checks?
Yeah, I can. Uh, what time?
Can I ask Rose?
I mean, once I have the amounts, it's like minutes.
If I can do it first thing, cause I have to go to the doctors tomorrow, so yeah, if you can, uh, first.
I can, I can drop them off on my way to work, so it'll be like 7:30, I can drop me off in the office.
Drop what off?
The vouchers.
Oh, the vouchers, okay.
The checks?
Yeah, I mean, I can, once I have the amounts, I can type up the checks in a matter of minutes.
Okay, so then.
That's not very long at all.
All right, so I'll make the motion that, uh, Gene and myself are able to go ahead and sign for the refunding checks, uh, one for $25,281.25, second one for $5,066.25, and the third one for $12,304.75, okay, so do somebody second that?
Twelve, three oh four, seventy-four or seventy-five?
Seventy-five, but that will be, have to be increased by one day's interest.
Okay.
So I'll have to let Rose.
Okay, so for what, what, so for the amounts that they need to be, uh, can I have somebody second that?
Also, okay.
All right, and then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved.
Okay, any questions about the bonds or anything? We do have, which I really don't understand why we have to, but they're having us make another payment in July of this year.
Yeah.
Before, when I've always dealt in bonds, you've had one year before the first payments due, but they have us making a payment now and then the next one is due July 15th. So we have to come up with additional money to pay water in general.
Okay.
So.
Do you know what the savings were for?
I don't, I started working on it and I was out of town and I didn't get it.
So next meeting you'll be able to give that?
Yeah. Uh, I did bring up signature cards.
Already done.
So, okay, and you filled out that other form also?
Yep, and I have a driver's license there in the safe if you ask Joy for them, um, she could give them to you, the minutes are right there with them as well.
Okay.
I'll get them tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay, uh, that's all I really needed on the bonds.
Thank you.
Is there anything else while I'm here?
Um, do you know the ninety-nine thousand that we got from FEMA, was that included in our budget or?
No.
It was not?
No, because we didn't really put the money, or you better let me rephrase that, I better go back and look, I don't believe we did.
Okay.
I don't believe we did, cause I didn't know how much it was even gonna be. So, uh, but John said that was for behind the building?
No, it was, uh, that was for the West Hill project.
Oh, the nine thousand was, I thought they told me.
The ninety-nine thousand, the first one.
No, 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 the one we just got.
The one, the blue folder that is before behind the, the business section.
Oh, the eighty-five hundred one?
Yes.
Something like that.
From the Cutler Museum to the Crawford House, drain, or, uh, gravel and fixing, whatever out behind there.
So was any of the money from, that we're receiving from FEMA budgeted at all or no?
Wasn't budgeted, but you've already spent as far as for Simmons, that has to come out of the, where you guys made a motion in last meeting or the meeting before to put money in for the Simmons expenditures.
Yeah.
And then you also put money into summer help because that was overspent because of their work on the flood and you put money in the street contractual expense.
Yeah.
And then you also reserve sixty-eight hundred, seventy-four hundred? Last meeting, I have it written down. I don't remember what you read.
Four hundred.
Fifty-four, okay. And you also reserved that. So, uh, once the books get closed and if we have a balance unexpended, if you wanna reserve some of that, I would suggest maybe you do it.
For capital approval, this has to.
Do it like that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Awesome job with the refunding, I know it wasn't easy.
Yeah, I've never worked with municipal solutions before, I've always dealt with fiscal advisors by Syracuse and Liverpool and, uh, I've never dealt with municipal solutions. They seem okay, just not knowing the people, I've always met everybody in person before and it's just emails and so forth.
Yeah, lots of them.
Yeah, today with a lot. So, okay.
All right, thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
It's Gene.
Good evening.
Next up, Mr. Brecker.
Okay, gentlemen of the board, Mayor Bojers, uh, you had requested that I do a inspection, building inspection on the senior center.
Yes.
Uh, I did that last Friday on June 19th. I'll start out with the rumors that are flying about asbestos in the building. The only sure way to determine that is to hire an environmental testing laboratory. I don't know of anybody that can look at material and be correct and say that there's asbestos in that. The last demolition I was involved in was a holy church and there was four of us, uh, including the building, the demolition contractor, that swore there was asbestos in the tiles in that church and we were all wrong and the church got a clean bill of health, there was no asbestos in there. That test cost us $167, so don't let these tests scare you too much. If there is asbestos there, it depends on whether it's encapsulated, whether it's harmful, or whether we're getting dust from the asbestos and, and then that causes your lung problems and whatnot. I would suggest if, if you have plans on keeping the building, that you at least have a test and don't listen to so-called experts out there, cause they can scare you.
Okay. Now, are you able to get ahold of us, like say, or likely we'll need to, even if we were to sell, like to have a good clean bill of health or whatever for the building, um, are we able just to get in contact with you and say, can you get this test done and get in contact with whoever so that?
I know outfits that do this testing.
Okay.
So I can, yeah.
Okay.
The foundation, complete foundation is a concrete block, there's a partial cellar foundation, uh, the cellar room is thirteen feet by twenty-six feet by seven feet high, it's an actual room, floor is concrete with a makeshift sun pump well cut through into the gravel below, the pump discharges to the main sewer pipe, which is illegal, there is less than an inch of water on the floor around the perimeter, which does not drain to the sun. That's not a big deal, making a sun pump well, and it's not a big deal to get the floor to drain towards a sun pump well. Gas appliances, the heat source is a forced hot air furnace, which has a PVC vent pipe extending to the outside. Now, the pipe stops at the outside of the wall, it should have an elbow on it, a riser pipe, and then, uh, which goes above the average snow depth, and then another elbow on it to keep rain and whatnot from collecting. There, we're talking pennies also.
Okay.
Uh, I didn't see the furnace in operation, but it looks like a recent furnace, it, it looks like a, um, a, a high output and the furnace looks like a fairly modern furnace. All, all the furnaces, uh, the, the late furnaces have PVC pipe chimneys on them, which I never thought I'd see a plastic chimney on a furnace, but that's what they're doing now. Gas hot water tank lacks a downspout on the pressure relief valve. That's a three-quarter inch pipe, three feet long, there we're talking pennies again. Vent pipe should be sloped upward and grounded, uh, at the entrance into the chimney, the vent pipe goes into the chimney, but it's, it's flat, you should have at least one inch per foot rise on it to get proper venting from the hot water tank, and then it should be grounded where the pipe fits into the chimney. All water lines are half inch, main sewer pipe is a combination of three inch cast iron and PVC, all looks okay. Electrical panel contains all circuit breakers, which somebody might have noticed that, was probably, um, redone at some point. The remainder of the foundation is crawl space, the floor joists over the crawl space are two by twelve, spaced sixteen inches on center. There's an inside and outside entrance to the cellar, the chimney is ceramic and extends upward through the building. I see nothing wrong with the chimney, uh, or nothing wrong, there may be a problem with, because it goes through the women's john, but there is no appliances in the women's john that go to the, to the chimney, so there won't be any leakage.
Okay.
On the ground floor, the emergency lighting throughout is inoperable. The rear exit door is forty-one inches openable, has crash hardware and serves as the handicap entrance and is of metal construction, that means code.
How much would the lighting cost roughly now?
Maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks. The, the lighting is there, the lights are missing on some of the lighting, some of the wires are disconnected, uh, but the wire, the lighting units are there above each door, entrance and exit door, so maybe electrician would charge you fifty bucks just to wire it properly.
Okay.
Electrical, there's an inadequate number of electrical wall outlets throughout the building, that might be one of your biggest projects, updating electrical. The outlets at the kitchen sink lack GFIs, that's ground fault, interruptors.
Do you know, you're gonna estimate how much that would cost about?
You can do that yourself, a GFI costs maybe five to seven dollars at Home Depot and you can wire them right into the socket itself.
Okay.
Very cheap. Uh, there's a three compartment stainless steel sink, which is good, health department approved of that.
The, uh, that belongs to the meals on wheels, they're taking that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and the stove.
Okay.
They purchased it.
I'm, I'm looking into what the kitchen needs to be.
Yeah, I'm just letting them.
Passed by the health department. There's no hand wash sink, nor vegetable prep sink with an air gap. The automatic dishwasher is inoperable, the kitchen range has been shut off by air poised gas because the pilot lights will not stay lit. There's a hardline phone at the kitchen wall, also air conditioning unit at the kitchen window. The cooking range vent hood is too small for the size of the range, uh, vent hoods should extend at least four inches beyond the perimeter of kitchen range. This is pretty much directly over the range, uh, and it lacks a fire suppression system. So that would, that would be an expense, you'd probably talk to maybe a thousand dollars, twelve hundred dollars for your hood and suppression system. Uh, the second floor, there's a partial second floor, thirteen, I, I've got thirteen inches by twenty-six inches, thirteen feet by twenty-six feet, and the ceiling there is eight foot high. The rest of the area is open to the ground floor, it's like a cathedral ceiling in there, but it's cut off, uh, because of pre-hung suspended ceilings. There's a four inch layer of rolled fiberglass insulation on top of that, uh, pre-hung suspended ceiling. The exterior, the roof is asphalt shingles and it looks almost brand new. The ridge beam is straight, shows no sag, you can usually tell the condition of a building by looking at the ridge beam, if you have a straight ridge beam, that means there's no sag in foundation, no sag in the exterior walls, they're not bulging out, um, rotten rafters, things like this. It looks like a very healthy, sturdy building. The soffit on the north side is open to birds and bats, uh, that's just a matter of a couple of boards being replaced to seal it off, uh, the entrance. The sewer vent pipe stops under the soffit, which it should extend above the roof. You probably could, because of it extending under the soffit, you probably could get gas sewer orders in, inside the building. The kitchen vent fan vents one foot from the building next door, according to code, it should be minimum of ten feet away from any building or per factory manufacturer's recommendations, sometimes the factory manufacturer's recommendations are a lot less than a ten feet. The siding is clapboard, it's in good shape, but it needs paint. The windows are very old style windows, replacement needs consideration, you'll have to take a crew over there and, and look at the windows, cause they're all different sizes and, uh, some of them are not in very good shape, they're old. Front steps are concrete, front entrance is a metal door, it's, uh, better than thirty-six inches, the handicap is concrete, handicap ramp, uh, that's one of the biggest expenses in renovating a building is handicap accessible, you have a handicap ramp there that needs code and you have a handicap entrance door that needs code. Buildings of sound construction, it's a building of pre-existence and does not conform to the present day building code, however, its use can still be maintained, I wouldn't close it up. It's being used as a pantry right now, it can stay being used as that, however, if you change the use, make an office building out of it, a recreation hall, uh, different use, then you gotta completely comply to the new code. You don't need to comply immediately in the use of the building, you can do it in phases. You know, if there's, if there's a problem with, um, a budget, economic strain on the village, you could, uh, first phase you could tackle the electric, second phase you could hit the building painter, this would be a perfect time to paint the building. I wouldn't close the building down, the building is, is, uh, it's, uh, historically, it's an enhancement to the town, it's a good looking building, it's, it's plumb, I don't see anything wrong with it other than love of the cosmetic stuff inside the building. Okay, I'd be happy to work with the village committee towards any upgrading if you wanted me to, uh, be involved. The, the building's very usable. That's basically all I have to say about that building, I think it's an asset to the village, I would definitely consider keeping it, I would definitely say don't tear it down because I, a guy like me couldn't condemn that building, there's not enough there to condemn it, has to be structurally disabled, you can't condemn a building.
Based on what you did for your assessment, Gary, what, what do you think the overall range to do all, everything that you listed, on painting, the electrical and, uh?
That depends, uh, if you guys have to put work out to bid, then you're gonna have to have, uh, pre-dating wages, things like that, uh, if you get volunteers, uh, that would drastically change. Prisoners do things like that, there's, there's, uh, municipalities that use prisoners for things like that, for painting. Electrical, I would, I would get a certified electric, electrician, because you're gonna have to have it electrically inspected by a state certified inspector. I would say, gee whiz, I don't know, five, six thousand dollars to, to bring that up to code, the, uh, New York State has come out with an existing buildings code and it's strictly for buildings like this that are pre-existing before the code, to bring them safely up to date and that existing buildings code is not as stringent as the New York State building code is. And, and that's what I would work with here, the existing building code.
So the five to six thousand would be like having volunteers or inmates, as you said, to do some of the work, correct? So pretty much just a cost of.
You know, I don't know, cause I don't deal in costs, um, it, it's, it's awful hard for me to say. I don't get involved in, in, uh, and I know, uh, Tom Ward's put a lot of things off to bids, I don't even pay attention to the bids, all I'm gonna do is inspect the work and make sure it's done directly. But I think, even if you had to hire the work, that five, six thousand should do it, I don't know how much you would, they would charge you to paint the building, might cost you two thousand to have the building painted. Might cost you a little more to change the, uh, vent fan above the kitchen range.
You got the ancil system, is it an ancil system?
There's no ancil system there, uh, there's no fire suppression system there.
So you'd have to get an ancil system.
Have to get an ancil.
Wet or dry or?
Perfect.
There's two different varieties, should we wet, wet or dry?
Uh, that would be up to you guys, I would take, certainly take the cheaper, um, wet is easier to clean up, if it goes off accidentally than dry, dry you get powder all over the place.
Why is that, why is that extremely necessary versus just a few fire extinguishers?
With, with the, that's what you mean?
Yeah, with the fire.
Suppression.
Supplying system.
That's a law, no, you have to have that, the health department, if you're gonna serve food in there, uh, you can serve food without that stuff, uh, if, if you have a commissary bring the food in, already servable, but if you're gonna do any cooking in there, uh, you need a fire suppression system because of grease fires.
Right.
Well, I think the village is worth keeping and I think, uh, because you don't have to update this thing by September, I mean, you could take two, three years to upgrade this if you want, be kind to your budget. I'll work with you on that, it's the safety things that we worry about, I'd make you put in fire extinguishers in there, there are a few fire extinguishers in there, make sure you got the right kind in there, uh, you certainly have enough escape routes, uh, you can't have more than a hundred people in there because then you need a sprinkler system.
Okay. That's a lot of information you just gave us, thank you.
Well, I tried to look over the building as much as I could and crawled into some of the spaces, there is a, there is a vent pipe coming out of the basement at the rear and extends about four feet up, where that's coming from, I don't know, haven't got a clue.
They had a citizen say that they, when they walk in the door, you smell gas and would that be the vent, as we roll the vent pipe, can I be, pull it up or?
I think what they smelled was, uh, the kitchen range and that's why.
That's why you're gonna shut off.
The gas company shut it off.
Okay.
I read the, uh, gas report, they said that the pilot lights wouldn't stay lit.
Okay.
So, that's probably the reason.
Does anybody have any questions for Gary? All right, well, thank you, sir.
Like I said, if you wanna, uh, wanna have a committee get together, I'd be glad to work with them.
Think that's something that we're gonna have to look at?
Just something that probably nobody can agree on is getting Gary going, making a contact with the people that do the asbestos testing. It's only gonna cost him a hundred and fifty dollars. It's a step in the right direction. We're gonna do any more renovations.
That hundred and fifty was the fee because I delivered all the specimens to the company. And all they had to do was send it to New York City because they don't have a land here in Buffalo. This was a Hamburg company, they sent it to New York City, they sent the results back and sent us the bill.
Okay. Uh, would you be willing, do you have the village?
Yeah, I could do that. What I need is some of you people to go through the building with me and tell me what you suspect or what the rumors are suspecting is asbestos.
Tile.
Seal tile?
No, floor tile.
Floor tile?
Was you updated on any of that? The county came in, I believe it was the county that came in. I guess for the aging, with the meal on wheels program, they have updated their requirements. And that's why the meal on wheels pulled out because they, the way it is right now, they won't meet their requirements for their audits and they get yearly audits now.
Okay, did they give you a list of requirements that they didn't like?
No, she said that she mainly mentioned the asbestos that the inspectors said and the range. And then she told me also the accessibility in the winter time is not adequate. There was a few other ones, but I don't remember offhand, so.
Well, the accessibility, I mean, that, that handicap ramp, it's a concrete sidewalk. But it's a ramp that goes around the back. I mean, that's gotta be shoveled out every day.
Yeah, and she said something too about the, it has been closed in the winter according to their new standards?
Uh, they're not, handicap ramps are not supposed to be closed at all.
No, 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 the front awning there, where their main entrance there, it hasn't been properly in the winter time. So, that's why they pulled.
Well, if you're gonna use the building, I mean, the, the steps gotta be shoveled off and sold.
Again, like I said, we've already passed a motion for them to, you know, we gave them their thirty days, so they're out of there. So we can move from that and see what we need to do. Obviously, we gotta get the test done, but you know, really need to look at it at the food pantry at the moment.
Yeah, if there's gonna be, uh, any abatement, if there is asbestos in there, then you're not gonna be able to use the building until all that asbestos is taken out because they have to have your amount of burners people.
I've done some asbestos abatement, it's a lengthy process and very costly.
I'm pretty sure it wasn't worth it, they were specifically talking about the floor tiles because they weren't sure what was actually under the carpet. And by the looks of it, it looks like the tiles go under that carpet. And Work and I went into the basement and there's even tiles on the landing going down into the basement.
That church that we had demolished was built in the early seventies and that's why we suspected it had asbestos in there, but it was clean, so.
Right. Well, that's the only way we're gonna find out.
Would, would you two be, Work and Jason, would you guys be wanting to meet with Gary and show him where you think there might be asbestos?
I'd go in there too.
Wanna go there?
Yeah.
Cause that's what I think about it, so I'm not gonna try to.
And then I'll get ahold of Kim and Kathy, right? And see who it was that did the inspection.
Kathy McKay?
Yeah, and see if they can maybe meet us there too and explain to you why. I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were in on the loop on that email, why they were pulling out.
I, I did explain to him a little bit about that the, the county had pulled out. They, they suspected asbestos in the floor tiles and there was a question about the stove installation.
So they're, they're playing it safe.
Yeah.
They're, they're calling in asbestos and let you approve otherwise.
Just gentlemen, so you know, if there are going to be three board members going, you will have to let people know it's seventy-two hour notice posted at the village hall on the website. It technically could constitute a public meeting if you make any decisions or discuss the business of what should be done with the building.
When would work for you guys to meet with Gary and what would work for you?
Anytime.
Friday?
Early afternoon, yeah.
What's afternoon?
Two o'clock, three o'clock.
Yeah, you guys can go.
That's fine, we may, two, three o'clock.
So then, I'll make a motion then that will go ahead and authorize Gary to, uh, take samplings with you guys there for the asbestos and to send it to the lab, which should be, which is around a hundred and seventy dollars. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, carried and approved.
Did both second?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then you guys?
Do you guys have key to that building?
No. I wasn't there when they were there.
Okay.
Meal on wheel with it.
Remind me tomorrow, Rose, to get the key back from Mark.
Okay, I have one.
Okay, I got the key to Mark when he was doing the, the new faucet.
Yeah, I got the key from Rose, but I didn't need it because it was hurting me.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know when they're out. They're waiting for their rates and where they're going to the church to remake. But I do know that the stove, they said they purchased as well as the sink, so that will be going with them. You know anything about that?
No, sir, I do not.
Oh, I've just seen you.
No, I, I'm just, I, I guess, I don't know what your future plans are for the building, but if you're gonna try to figure out and sell it, I guess that, that the stove would probably be a non-selling point in my book. Seven men and, that's a big stove.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Big stove.
It's kinda, it's not big money, but the village did just put in faucet.
They just put in faucet.
Is the faucet going with the sink?
I, no, no. I didn't hear about that.
Well, there's gotta be a fine line down there. It's their sink, we maintain the building like that. So I was, I was thinking about that too while you guys were discussing that. We just put, I mean, the, the.
Repair rental, so.
So, yeah, so it's, it's maintenance, I guess you'd call it, wouldn't you?
I would.
Well, you know, if, if they're taking the sink and the range out of there, then they don't have to worry about a vent hood or anything.
Well, that's what I was getting at is that, you know, we, we won't be used as a food pantry, so.
Did you say two o'clock Friday?
I'll be at the building at two, so if you guys can't make it till two thirty-three, that's bad.
You gotta make it. Just out of curiosity, should we shut the water off when they're done? Or you want, I mean, we, you know, don't worry about anything I know, but.
What about, what about the other?
Their west trouble, west trouble.
No, I, I called everyone and told them with the asbestos and the, you guys said nobody could use the building, so nobody's met in there. The meeting last week, they found an alternate place and I told the historical society for tomorrow that they needed to find somewhere else as well, so nobody else is using the building.
All right, so we should get on that right away?
Yeah, that'll be all.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Very much, appreciate it.
Good evening.
All right, uh, Big John?
Yes? I, the person I need is, um, I'd say eighteen hundred dollars to buy tires for dump truck. I need a Google.
Okay.
I can order, they're on state bid, so price is what it is.
Chief's didn't get?
Yeah, two hundred and, I'd say it's seventeen hundred and ten some odd of all dollars. It's another two hundred to put them on, but I've part over two hundred to put them on to ourselves.
Which, which truck were we pumping off?
A few hundred.
Those are any recaps?
No, sir. We gave them recaps in the front.
What are your fronts?
It's a total ride, so we're gonna put, I, my theory is six and tires. We haven't bought tires for that truck since, uh, it's been a while.
You can't remember, it's hardly the time.
Well, it's been, it's been better part of twelve years since we bought a set of tires for that truck.
All right, well, I'll make a motion then that we authorize them to go ahead and, Work?
Where'd you get those from?
Where'd you get those from normally?
Uh, I called the Stein brothers, they.
Well, the reason why I ask is, didn't we authorize Bradley's to buy tires? An auto body for the vi- village vehicle or is it just a police car?
It would be just a police vehicle.
Police is from what?
They were just work on.
No, it was tires as well, that's why I was curious. This, this all I'm asking is because I don't want them coming back and saying.
Well, I got a problem, I called Jared, but I'm going through the Stein brothers and I don't know if Jared's into the big truck tires.
I don't know, that's why I asked.
I will, I'll gladly stop and ask him. I, I am, that's one thing I'm a hundred percent. Anything in this village, we can get done in this village by all means.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're not stepping on anybody's toes because, you know.
Good point, take it, I will.
It was specifically, I don't have the motion with me, but it was for the police car maintenance.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, I wasn't sure.
Splitting it between the two for the police car, but.
I don't know, that's why I was curious.
What do, what do we do for the maintenance on the rest of, like, the large dump or your, the Ford and you do it all? What if it's something you can't do?
Well, it's something I can't do as far as like the, the, the other day the fifty-five hundred wouldn't run, it went back to the dealer, don't cost the village the toll and everything. This is, this is where, where we stay within three years on our trucks and the truck will plumb with. We don't let them get out of warranty because we all know what happened when we get out of warranty, they get very expensive. Anything above and beyond, I can't find out. Fortunately, my daughter's married to a certified diesel mechanic, works for Port, he used to work for Port Motor Truck, now works for National Grid. He's pretty good to help him eat. There's Dale Smith's pretty good with heavy duty equipment. He will come, he's helped me a while. Matter of fact, when we are in our front in the blue truck, he can balance up the backlash in the urgent emergency room. And there's Joe Friends over on Lumber Lane. Joe's been always more than willing to come and help or if you got a question, he's very good about answering. Might try to keep as much in-house as possible because it's expensive when it goes out to the air.
All right, uh, so I made motion to allow Big John to go and get tires for Big Blue, as you call it?
I'll second that.
No, definitely, definitely will stop and check with Jared, I don't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I didn't know, it was just all vehicles.
All right, and then all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved. Just go wherever the rest prices, that's what the procurement policy states.
Well, it's state bid. It's, I mean, the tires I'm buying, they're on state bid, so we can't, there's no, what's the exact words I wanna say, there's no, can't even argue over it.
Right.
I guess maybe auditor wise, something, you know.
Yes, states typically propose that you get.
The Chinese tires too. I don't wanna think about all that.
All right, anything else?
Yes. One thing that I got, I've, I've got a lot in my mind and it's just a lot that's been going through my head. I hear a lot of things around town.
Do we need an executive?
For what? No.
I don't know, I just, he, he started to add his.
I, what I got to say is what I got to say. It's nothing against nobody or anything. It's just I hear a lot that goes on and it's, it seems like there's, you know, there's a lot of town people are divided, it seems like. Friday, I was supposed to spend the afternoon with my grandkids at the dairy zoo, power went out. We had issues back here, I flew home. Aggravate me a little bit, but it's circumstances beyond my control. You know, that's the way things go. And I guess all's I'm asking is, I've put my heart and soul in this place. I've left family parties, I've done stuff and I'm not beating, patting myself on the back or my bragging about myself, but I done it because the job had to be done. And that's all I'm asking of you guys is you listen well to what each other's gotta say and just make things move forward and let's get to work. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for any favors, I don't ask favors of anything, just let's, if somebody's got something to say, let's let it well be heard and understand what they got to say. And that's the bottom line. It's all I'm asking. If you got any more questions for me, I will gladly answer them. Got anything? You're right, that wasn't, didn't have to executive session. I think you got a great bunch of guys here, so let's just get to work, let's dig in, let's push.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything for Big John?
One other question. What do the summer help make per hour?
Eight seventy-five.
Okay. I need to know that, so maybe, this is one question I might be having.
We do need to finish some paperwork up for them.
Hey, yes, and you said you wanted them tomorrow morning?
I would take them tomorrow or Wednesday.
Okay, I will send them up here and then they can do all their paperwork and get done what you guys do for you while I'm, while they're messing with it.
Question for you is, actually, since we do have mowing for the DPW, are you gonna have Toad or are you gonna have some of the summer help do the mowing, what's your?
Um, I, today, well, Toad's off on vacation. Um, I did take and send the summer help over to the sewer plant with the weed whackers and the lawn mower. I told him, you know, not to get up out of the bags, not to get any places till I got back over there. So I had to go back over and mess with the water some more. And the, the John Bronenberg's son seems very attentive, very good about the lawn mower. He mows that over there, no problems. I watched him get into a couple, not in tight situations, but he got himself a little bit by and he used his head, he got out. He was, I think by no means flying or running around. Uh, my biggest concern that I have is I don't mind him roaming the tractor like from here to the sewer plant. I don't mind him roaming around town, but I can't have him roaming it out to the woods. So in the grand overall theory of it all, I think I'll divide, I, if, you know, I'm willing to listen to Jesse's little thing, but I think I'll divide the lawn mowing duties up between either the guy that actually worked for DPW and I'll let him go or I know places he can go that I've known he's not gonna get in trouble and not be hurt. I will definitely not let him mow around the old reservoir. I don't, I'm not even a fan of anybody doing that, but that's one of the things that has been, you know.
Has he always done that? Toad always done the mowing in those areas or when Chunk was here, did he?
Chunky did all the mowing for the village for, I'm guessing, part, the better part of twelve years. And he was done and it was, the decision was made that we would start doing it in-house. Why, how come, I don't know. That's what I was told, so, um, it's really, well, I guess I don't wanna worry this. The third guy that we don't have right now is, I guess, is the deciding factor because right now it's just been me and Toad. Now the summer help showed up, it's easier, you know, I kinda figure out things to do around like this way. We're just doing tingly, tingly things because I don't have a truck driver, which is no big deal, there's a lot of silly things can be done here, there, everywhere. They're gonna come do some work for Rose, they can do some weed whacking, I'm not chasing around taking their other things and, you know, and we'd all work together, get some other stuff done. This morning we did help the town off a little bit. Did some cold patching with them, did some rolling for them quick and, you know, because they're always right here when he does, I mean, they're here to put the banners up, they're here for this, they're here for that. I mean, they're always good, so it was a nice little payback. I think, I mean, that's, it's whatever you guys feel you wanna do. I mean, if you think you want the firm at all, you know, to get hired on the first, just to mow lawn, if you got the money, that's, I guess that's a decision on your behalf, but it's the way that things are right now, I think we got all the bases covered and you can save that extra money. It's been tough this year, we have to rinse the rain every time you turn them around, you know, it's awful, you know.
Works this week, could be that way too.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, um, as far as the two other summer help, very impressive. I'm guessing probably, I, it's, usually when we get summer help, there's always, if we have three, there's always two that stand out and one is, this year, I mean, it's, they listen well, they are, and we love to ask questions and they're, you know, very, very congenial and, you know, when you show them something, they seem to pick it right up and go. Can't complain.
Good. So then right now then, you're just gonna use Bronenberg and Greg to do it then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I might, you know, turn, you know, get a, if we get a few moments, maybe let one of the other kids add it, you know.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You've been helping.
All right.
All right, uh, moving along. Whole business, um, Rose. Whole business, um, Rose did, I know that the zoning board met, but did they?
Planning board met.
Yeah, did the planning board meet, did they discuss?
They met, they are in process, I'm working on a signed portion for the town zoning law, they're working on a sign permit, and, um. God, there's something else I need to work on, um. They're in the midst of rewriting them, so everybody has minutes of the meeting, but I didn't forward the, the proposed sign law or the proposed sign permit. Because they're still working, they're, they're in process on developing those.
Okay.
Um, so.
So then, still gonna be tail then?
Yep, it, it's, it'll be a long process.
Okay. Alright, uh, big topic is the proposed water law. Was anybody able to, I'm sorry I got to you out late today, but was anybody able to see any of the revisions that I, uh, that I made by chance?
No, I wrote them real right, correct?
Um.
You're real and red?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Did you?
Yep.
Okay, um, is there anything in particular that anybody wants to see changed with the water law? I guess, I mean, so that we can get this out for, cause what is, how's the process work for it, we have to?
What you do is, there has to be a final version of the law, that final version of law is given to each member of the board. And at that point in time, it starts a waiting process, two waiting periods begin, and they can go at the same time. One, it sits on the desks of, not officially desk, you each have a copy of it for seven days, that's called the ripening wait. And that has to be done every time unless there is a message of necessity from the mayor, and then you can reduce that to zero days if you want. That's one of the two paths that has to be done, the other one is a thirty day waiting period, where you post a request for comments from the public. And there has to be a notice published, a formal notice, not just the one that goes on the, the village hall for when there's a change in meeting, but an actual formal notice. In the newspaper of record that says, we're proposing changes to a local law, we've set a hearing for such and such a date. Come to us on this set date, we're holding a hearing for your public commentary, and you have to allow certain types of commentary and lengths of commentary that you wouldn't necessarily otherwise be required to. You have to read into the record any written commentary that's been given, and at that point, the board could decide to adopt the law. And if you'd like, I can write up, and I would prefer if you did, will allow me to write up a formal explanation of what the process is, so that you know what it is, and you can all follow, and everyone be on the same page.
Yes.
And that would take all of, maybe ten minutes tonight, because I've done it multiple times, but I wanna make sure it's clear, and that everybody knows what the process is.
Okay. I agree with that. Um, so, as you guys know, the water law has been, was started, I'm gonna guess, what was it, five years ago or so, Rose?
I think that was when they started meeting to, to develop it, yeah.
Alright, so, we had the old water committee, um, and then that was led by previous superintendent Jason Offerback, and then Cory, uh, worked on it as well. I, was there any revisions that he did by chance, do you know of?
No, he, he did a review of it, but he didn't have any changes that I recall.
Okay, um, just to go over what I would like to see changed, uh, in regards to the water law. First off, I just found what we went over with, um, the health department, uh, was, for one, was to eliminate the word superintendent and actually use the term operator in charge. So whoever our OIC, which the department, the health department uses OIC, or excuse me, uses ORC, for the MORs and all of that. Whoever is gonna be our operator in charge, whether it be superintendent, whether it be whoever, but change it to operator in charge, instead of using the term superintendent. And then, of course, corrected everything that said superintendent to be operator in charge. Um, that was for definitions, um, let's see here.
Do you have the physical copy with the highlights still?
Um, I'm just going off of what I have on the word document.
Page twenty would be the next.
Page twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Besides operator in charge, I mean, oh, there it is, yeah, it doesn't show it on the phone, but it does on the computer, um. And this is under maintenance, uh, for service line extension is what it's listed under. Uh, but I added in there that if the village thaws the wa, and this is in regards to, uh, frozen pipes. Uh, if the village thaws the water service and the operator in charge determines the freeze was located on the customer's side of the curb box. The village will charge a fee as determined on the schedule of rates and fees for the time spent in thawing out the service line. Uh, it continues, if a service line freezes and the operator in charge determines the freeze is determined to be on the village's side of the curb box. From the time of freeze until the customer later receives a notice to stop, the customer shall allow a small amount of water to run, to prevent a future freeze. And the customer shall receive for a bill during any such period that is in average of the previous three months' usage. If the customer does not allow the water to run and the service line subsequent, subsequently freezes, the village will charge a fee for the hours spent in subsequent visits to thaw the service line, such be determined on the schedule of rates and fees. Uh, the customer shall be responsible for keeping the meter from freezing, should the water meter freeze causing any damage to the meter, the customer shall be responsible for the cost of replacing the meter. At the actual expense to the village in obtaining a replacement, in addition to the fee for the time replacing the meter at the hourly rate set on the schedule of rates and fees. Um, so that pretty much is, covers everything for the water freezing issue that we've had for every year, it seems like, but last year was really bad. Going on, what's the next page, Rose, do you know?
Alright, Jennifer, press five, you have to do that. That was just stopping, okay.
There was one thing I didn't much care for.
What's that?
Uh, that even though the, the meter is owned by the village, all responsibility, all maintenance falls on the property owner. I mean, what is the lifespan of these meters, do they not guarantee the life?
Where are you seeing that the maintenance is the responsibility of the?
Uh, maintenance, uh.
It's in the maintenance section in general, but they have to keep it from freezing, because.
Right.
That's on the, the property owner to make sure they've got their basement at fifty, so that water doesn't freeze and blow up.
Actually, but in two different spots. That's quite long. But he told us also that we could be responsible to the meter, you said that in the last meeting, that it was a local law that we have and not the.
That I believe a local law could allow the village to do that, yes.
Yes.
From what?
To be responsible for the lines up to the water meter.
But it is possible, and my understanding is that Rural Water Association throughout the entire US is working on a program that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but we.
That if the customer's responsible up to the main, that the village can then insure at the customer's expense and put on a bill all the way up to the meter.
Yeah, that's what, that's gonna be my next name, is that we were supposed to check on that, right?
I don't know how long it's gonna take for, I mean, can we always revise, say if rural water comes out, because this is gonna at least get the law, something updated, so. We have more updates, but, or everything's classified and stated correctly, where right now, a lot of things are up in the air with the water law. But are we able to, say, if rural water comes up with this insurance, and it is good, it's not crap, and that you have to go through hoops and loops and all this. Are we able to change, make a resolution to the law, or would we have to do a whole nother hearing and all kinds of stuff like?
Right now, the law has it so that the customer's responsible up to the curb box, if Rural Water Association says that's fine for the standard, and that you can allow people to pay a fee for the insurance. You can pass by resolution something on the schedule of rates and fees that says, everybody's getting this fee unless you opt out, if you want. And that covers your meter, or your line freezing, that if you opt out, line freezes, you're responsible for the water bill and for paying for having the line unfrozen.
Okay, so we can just do.
As, if you're keeping it right now with the curb box, and Rural Water Association decides that's where they wanna put the line. If they wanna move the line from curb box to main, or from curb box to meter, then you'll have to pass a local law changing that portion of this law.
Okay.
But because we don't know exactly where they're gonna set the standard on that, we have to pick one, whatever we think is most reasonable, whether, regardless of what they do one way or the other. And then you probably would wanna adopt a law in the future, if you wanna take advantage of that program.
Okay, I got you, uh, when it talk about the meters, is like as far as the maintenance and everything, that's just so that they don't freeze? If the meter does freeze, then it's upon the customer to repay for that meter, like what just happened with Mr. Barr, that his meter, for whatever reason, jumped. How many hundred thousands of gallons, we're replacing that on our own, because that's not his fault.
Yeah, it's on a case by case basis.
Well, I mean.
It says, it says.
It says nothing about three.
It says in this new water law that the village is responsible for the meter, any damage that occurs. That is a result of the property owner is the property owner's responsibility.
Yeah, that was again.
Any other maintenance or replacement is on the village.
Right, so if it's, because they freeze it, or if it freezes because they didn't keep it from freezing, then it's laid upon them, as far as any other kind of maintenance, it's laid upon the village.
It's my understanding that that's how the law reads as well.
Um, then, the next one is on page thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yep.
Um, is access to meters, uh, for them to read, uh, which really, with the new meters, it should be an issue, but until then, uh, it's gonna be until late fall. Uh, they say that they have, they must arrange access for the village meter reader within thirty days, is what was on there, um, I changed it to three days. Feeling that, I mean, the guys have to do their mon, their water reads that week, so they need to get them all done, if there's an issue that somebody can't get in there. To allow it to be within the three days, so that they can move on and be done with it, going forward, it really should have.